All right, we're going to start. Meeting call door. Oh, saved my belt. Here, I'm here. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alberon?
Present.
Ms. Calderon?
Here.
Mr. DeCosta?
Present.
Ms. Koffinger?
Here.
Mr. Lombardi? Mr. Luna?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Dunn?
Here.
And Ms. Gomez?
Here. Answer the questions.
The flag on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board statement. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof in the record, New Milford Public Harborette, New Milford Borough Hall, and the main office of all New Milford Public Schools. The Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings on the Board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first, at the beginning of the meeting, for agenda items only, and the second, at the end of the meeting, for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student.
Is there a presentation?
No presentation.
Okay. So Superintendent of Schools Report, Edith Galasso.
My report is going to be tomorrow. We're talking about the Graduation Pathways Report. That's state mandated that we have to do. I'll put in more then. It's about the different pathways that students can take to graduate and fill their requirement for the New Jersey State. And there are three, but there's technically four, and I'll explain the difference between that. We also have a new NJSIA spectator code of conduct that I'll just briefly mention because those are going to start being posted all across the gyms and facility. And basically, it's trying to keep spectators in line now because that's where our society is going. Under personnel, you know, they're asking you to take a look at retirees. You know, what we're discussing that as well, we have two big ones. And so we'll surprise everyone tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Acting Business Administrator Report, Chris Watson.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everybody. What I did is I made a copy of the work session agenda that you have. Next to it is a draft of tomorrow night's agenda. So if you wanted to look at some of the items, in case you had some questions, you know, that would help you when you can zero in on that. While you're reviewing that, I do have a couple of things to talk about. One, just want to let the Board know in case you get phone calls. We've had, for some reason, a rash of bus problems. We have three buses that have been in a shop one towed away on the road. We've doubled up on routes to make sure students are picked up. We've informed parents. We have informed principals. They've helped us with that communication. But just in case, you know, we were spending money that we didn't plan on spending on these buses. We have two buses with wheelchairs, both of them are down. So therefore, unfortunately, we're not transporting a particular child that needs that bus. So we had to make other arrangements, which we did. And hopefully, we will get that bus back tomorrow afternoon so we may be able to start picking the child up at the school and bringing the student home. But we're working on this, and it's, I can't explain it, but buses, they went down one after the other with all kinds of problems. We had to rebuild an engine. We had transmission problems. We had spent a lot of money on tires. We had our buses inspected. And in order to pass the state inspection, we had to put some money into these vehicles. So I'm just letting you know, just so, at a courtesy, if you get a call, you're aware of it, you're not surprised. But so far, we're, the ladies in my office are doing a great job handling this. I have to give them a lot of credit, so they're doing well. And Brian, who is our facilities manager, is also working hard. Let me finish. If you have questions, I'll certainly answer any questions. On the agenda tomorrow, I'm asking the Board to approve the budget calendar. I spoke to Stephanie. Normally, this is a little later to get an approval. But because Superintendent is new and she's not here, I thought it'd be a good thing to get this started and then I can work with Superintendent as well, getting the budget started for you. As you know, probably one of the top five important things that we do is put a budget together and adopt a budget. That's critical. So we want to get a start, and we can do that. So you have a copy, which I gave to each of you, so you can see it. That'll be on for an approval. There will be another motion on tomorrow. We've had, as you well know by now, we had to remove the drop-down tables in both elementary schools. I have some pictures that anybody's interested, I'll pass these around. What's left after the tables are gone is a steel-metal combination of a wall unit, which does, we do have concerns for some of our kids, obviously, running into it, getting caught. So we have ordered wall pads for the cover. They'll be coming. It's on the motion. You'll be approving that tomorrow night. We did it in advance because it is a safety issue. We had a meeting with everybody. Superintendent was 100% behind it as well. And so that's been ordered. And as soon as they get in, we're going to rip those metal casings out. We're going to restructure it with two-way boards, et cetera, frame it out. And then we're going to put some mats up for safety so children are fine. We shouldn't have any problems. So that's on the motion tomorrow night as well. I'll just give you a little update on the roofs. As you know, you have two schools that are being re-roofed. Gibbs is about 98% done. The high school is probably somewhere around 80 to 85% complete. We're waiting for metal to be delivered. The metal is the flashing. It's also some penting work and so forth. Once that comes, we have to stage it on the property somewhere safely, and then the crews come and they start taking and bringing it up. And the metal work, they'll be working mostly after hours and on weekends. Make sure we have a separation. Gibbs is good. We have, on Thursday, I had the state inspector. Now, you have a situation where we did receive approval for two rod grants. The third rod grant is still mulling on, and that's the mechanical, in the auditorium, the mechanical work. We haven't even had an approval on that yet. When you work with the SDA, it is not that easy. Let me tell you that. So I have been working on trying to get our grant money. And I have, just to give you an idea, they do it as a step ladder. Step one, you have to apply for your share of the SDA for design work. Step two, you have to come back and do a 30 to 65% construction work. Once they're approved and they're inspected, then you can go to 95% or a completion, if you want, or satisfactory situations, what they call, and then we can fly. So it's not going out and saying, "Give us all our money." You have to do this. A lot of paperwork involved. So we're working on that. And right now, Thursday, by the way, they won't grant that until they send someone out and they do an actual walk-around. Now, Thursday, I have the architect joining me, and I have the garland rep. Garland is the roofing material. So we have both of them joining me to meet with the SDA inspector. So there should be no questions that this gentleman has that we cannot answer for. So if that goes well, we should be getting the okay to get, let me give you a number here. So the first payment I'm looking for will be about $657,000, a little shy, about $657,000 in SDA. And we've been very aggressive with this. Other districts I've worked with that did it, kind of fly, some others, they're way behind. The state's very hard to work with, but I was able to build a relationship with one of the inspectors down there, so they've been very good with working with us. So if this goes well, we should get approval for that. Then I'm going to the third step on the roofs, and I'll obviously work to get the rest of our SDA from the SDA. So I'll just let you know. When that comes in, I'll give you a little heads up. And I got my fingers crossed that we receive that right after. Okay, that's pretty much it for now, just to make everybody aware of the various things. And if you see them on the agenda, you know why they're there. I'm trying to explain it. The pictures speak for themselves, I think, with the two elementary.
I have two questions.
Yes.
So will the matting cover this whole area?
Yes.
Okay, just this one, make sure. And then for the child that needed wheelchair transport?
Yep.
How did we outsource it? What did we do on that?
Well, we worked out a communications with the parent.
Okay.
So we're fine. We don't have to take on any other individuals we don't know, which is important.
Does anyone else have any questions? Paige?
Thank you. So on the rod grants, just so that I have it clear, there are three that we applied for.
You applied for three. You got approval for two. The other one, they did not approve yet.
They're still in process?
It's in there. It's lost.
Right.
That's where it is.
So there's.
I got them looking for it.
Okay. So, but on the two that we did for the roofs?
Yes.
What you're saying is, we haven't gotten the payment yet. We should be getting the first payment?
Right after this inspection. Correct.
The moment again? Inspection?
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday? Okay. I was writing, I missed the date.
Thursday.
So that'll come in then shortly after that. And then what's the balance that we should be getting?
Oh, good question. We should be getting somewhere about a total, well, I can tell you. Just give me a minute here. Okay, on the high school, our total share should be about $1,209,700. So almost, almost $1,203,000. Almost $1,203,000. All right, and then on the Gibbs, by the way, that, to give you an idea, that's 40% of the contract. And there's a motion on tomorrow. You'll see it. The final contract, including the two change orders. So you can see that we are under the bid number, and we're getting more out of it because I did more work. We had the money given back. I was unhappy with some of the things, and I had to put some guards on and so forth. So we're still under. The high school total is running us about $3,242,000. Now, that's a combined of the construction bid and also your architect's piece. Okay? And then on Gibbs?
Sorry, I know this was before when we were doing everything, but I don't have any of that here, so.
That's fine.
Well, that's all right. So the Gibbs, our share for the Gibbs roof project is $172,290. That total was $437,25, including the bid of like $393,000, I think it was, or a couple. You see it on there, and in the architect's piece.
Do you have any more questions?
Nope.
That is it. Any questions?
I do. For the public cafeterias at the elementary school, are students using that area now? And if they are, how will we monitor it so that they stay safe?
Yeah. We have met with both principals. Both principals have addressed the issues, you know, with the student body, the teachers who are on, and obviously munchausen, et cetera. So we're keeping the tables and the students away at that time. We're telling them the best we can, you know, be careful, you know. But we're obviously in a jam, multi-purpose, we have no other place for them to eat. So we are keeping them away the best they can, the best they can. That's all I can say. They're working on it. So that's why we moved so quickly. When I went over to see what would it look like, I immediately, I called Peter. And Peter came over, and I thought, I really have a concern here. This is not, so, well, we don't have any budget, again, we don't have any more budget money. Okay, fine. So we went back and figured out how to do it, which I told you, you know, and, or Peter did, I'm sorry. Peter put it in his update, which we did. So we're doing okay with that. Trying to find the money on the buses as well. So moving money around and making sure we're trying to meet everything, but not hurt us, which is a challenge. So that's the way we're doing it. So as soon as we saw it, we jumped on. We weren't even waiting for the media to jump on it right away because I do have a concern. And everybody agrees. Principals were very pleased. Obviously, Peter's support was necessary after the Superintendent's support.
So now for lunch, Mr. Watson, are we rolling tables in or leaving the classroom? What's now that?
No, they're on the tables, tables coming out. We had some problems, little minor problems with the tables at Berkeley. And the fold-out, they come down, but they weren't staying. So I had the company come out, and we worked with everybody together. We readjusted them. We kind of felt, from a group talk, which would include a principal and Peter, myself, and Brian, that if we got these felt pads, because when you open them up and put the tables down, they didn't go flush to the floor, so therefore, students could get their feet or their hands underneath. It was about that way. So I've seen this before. We recommended these felt pads with adhesive stripping to it, which would take up the gap. And we have them. They're putting them on. On the first round, we went on, it wasn't enough, so we doubled it up.
And where are we storing the tables?
They're stored, that was another challenge. Go ahead.
That was a challenge. And I want to give the custodians and the PE teachers a lot of props because they were extremely patient and extremely flexible because we kind of threw a monkey wrench into their world. So they used to have a huge PE storage closet, which was beautiful. Every gym teacher's dream. And we took it.
Sorry.
Well, we took half in one case.
We took, yeah.
We took half in one case. And then we shuffled space around in the hallway in one case.
Right. Two closets down the hall.
Two closets down the hallway. Moved aftercare.
Yeah, the night care program, supplies, we moved down the hall. Though we were able to keep the refrigerator right in the multi-purpose side so they can use it. They were very cooperative. Got a lot of nice people here.
Yes.
I've been in a lot of districts, and I'll tell you, they had all the nice people.
They gave them a chance to purge a little bit and keep what they needed. So it actually was like a.
And the visiting teachers were very, very concerned that, at one time, someone, not Peter and not Bruce, but someone said, "Well, we're going to have to take their office and use that as storage." So we had a little bit of an upsetment on our hands, but we calmed it down, and we didn't have to take their office. We worked it out. But Mr. Alberon answered your questions. The tables are cleaned after they're non-folded and rolled into both of these huge storage closets. So they're totally out of sight. So there's no danger if the kids go in and play ball and do their effects. We got that covered. Thank you, Mr. Alberon. We had a.
There's a lot of business.
There's a lot of business. Good.
Any other questions? Any liaison board committee reports? Tony?
I have a report on our policy committee that was settled. We moved that out September 12th. And on tomorrow's agenda, we have nine revisions. We have one new policy. We have two abolished policies. Just to hit the high notes, the new policy is service animals. Talking about being ADA compliant. It's definitely the first policy to have miniature horses in it. The abolished policies are, nay, I said. The abolished policies are, interestingly enough, remote public meetings or a declared emergency. That's been abolished. So I don't know if we ever were facing a pandemic-type situation. I guess they got released, new orders, new law, et cetera. We've also abolished gifts from vendors, which never existed in our policy book and really pertains to Abbott districts. And as far as the revisions go, every once in a while, the policy allows you to refresh things. And first policy, board member number in term. We all know how many board members we have in term, but the revision was how to fill vacant positions on the Board. There's a policy for curriculum content, which basically removes a specific NJSLA assessment so that in the future, if we don't have it anymore, we don't change the policy. It's more generic. Physical examination for teachers and support staff. It gives the Board, in creating a policy, the option to make our induction, if you will, to the district more stringent in terms of, right now, they passed, Mr. Galasso, a general physical examination, immunization. You know, the policy allows you, if we recommend it so, to do a drug test, to do a psychological, do more thorough. But it was the committee's feeling to keep things the way that they are, knowing that if in the event a teacher or a staff member were to be dealing with some difficulties, we always can pull back to another policy that will enable us to get them the help that they need. Attendance. It was a very good discussion on attendance. And everyone should understand that whereas the local district can excuse absences, the state excuses very few absences. And when we excuse an absence in the district, that does not mean it gets recorded as an excused absence for the state. The state really wants to know about seat time, how many times you're received. So the committee looked at the different reasons for an excused absence and looked at the total of unexcused absences permitted that may impact grade or promotion, et cetera. Student suicide prevention, obviously revised more with more specific protocols for training and response concerning suicide prevention. Emergency and crisis situations, specific language has been mandated to be included to address the needs, to take into consideration the needs of disabled or otherwise impacted students when conducting emergency drills. Not only in their mobility, but in terms of the sounds and things like that. We have a policy revision for firearms and weapons. It's a very old policy, and unfortunately, the weaponry has increased. And so it's more specific in certain types of weapons, firearms, and responses. And we have a policy revision concerning volunteer coaches, which updated requirements, including tuberculosis testing and the need for a background check. A substitute cert, the committee says, will not be required. But it is a little bit more stringent in terms of the background check and the TV testing. And, Mr. Galasso, I think you said the background check is paid for by the Board.
Correct.
Okay. I sent you this report just before the meeting, and I asked if we put in our agenda dry for tomorrow. So anybody have any questions? I'm sure Mr. Galasso can answer better than that. Anybody have any questions about policy, the work, the policy committee?
I just want to make one comment with the policy with the background check. Whether it was a policy or not, I know that the district did always require a background check before volunteers. It's that sub cert, that was a tricky thing. But just in case anyone hears that we didn't, that volunteers always went through a background check.
Volunteers, anybody who works with children has to get a background check. That's what we are comfortable with. That's what we mandate. So yes, that never changes.
And thank you, Tony, for making policy funny. I'm a time machine. And I'll hear more about the policies around the community.
It ain't hay, you know what I'm saying?
I'm part of that, Joe. I'd like to talk about it all pages, drink water again.
Yes. Any other liaison committee reports?
So I don't think we've got a really established chair as for the pilot ad hoc committee, but I did just want to bring up that we do have, we have a meeting set with the Borough tomorrow to discuss the development that is being proposed at the old ShopRite location. On our agenda, discuss potentially that, you know, the details of the project, the development, and how, you know, how it would affect, you know, obviously, the district, the students of Milford, and to kind of express that we, you know, we want to be involved in the process and want to make sure that we are, you know, looking, you know, towards the, how this will affect to the district. So that's something that is happening tomorrow. So I would probably have more, or whoever is can refer more on what happens after that meeting tomorrow with Mayor and his people.
Okay. Anyone else on the Board? Counselor Wilson Moore?
Hey, it's always nice to see everybody. All right. And I'd just like to echo what Ms. Calderon said, that the Borough is also looking forward to this meeting tomorrow. Thanks for your partnership, as well as your input. And thank you for your hard work on this issue as well. I have an update tonight. I also want to thank the Board and the School District for, again, partnering with us because it's a true partnership initiative with our annual Domestic Violence Awareness Symposium. We have finalized our roster of all partnering and collaborating agencies. Everyone's back on Board. We're going to be joined this year by the new Bergen County Prosecutor's Office Domestic Violence Chief, who is taking over the position this year. And our future guest speaker this year will be Alexis Ruhl from Ravico College. Some of you may have heard of her. In October 2022, she was kidnapped and brutally assaulted and escaped at Woodbury Commons in New York. So she has graciously agreed to be our speaker this October. And again, I can't thank you enough for your partnership. It's a true honor and privilege that we can come together as a community, the Borough, the School District, the Board of Education, and our Police Department, and all of our partnering agencies to hopefully have yours. So thank you.
Counselor Wilson Moore, what is the date that that's going to be held again, and at what time? And is it open to the public? Is it open only by invitation, et cetera?
Thank you for that question. This year's event will be on Tuesday, October 29th, at 6:00 PM. Again, Tuesday, October 29th to 6:00 PM. It will both be open to public for live in-person attendance and also simultaneously live streams with the great thanks to Mr. Preet in the back, who every year does a fantastic job and doesn't get nearly enough credit, man, for the amazing work that you do with that live stream, where we reach a tremendous number of people. And what we find interesting doing this work is it's a, it doesn't just spike viewership and it stops. The engagement of the YouTube link continues at a pretty steady rate for approximately a year. And I believe that's in part because the agencies continue to share the link on their social media, which continues to get future engagement. And we encourage people to attend. So it's always open to the public because our intended audience is the community at large, and not just the victims and survivors and their families, to try to educate and inform people of the different faces of domestic violence, which is our theme this year, with a focus on communicating a message that domestic violence does not know differences of gender, ethnicity, political affiliation, social status. It impacts everybody, and as a result, is truly a problem for our entire society. It overlaps so many other issues, including addiction and alcohol and a series of problems. And I'd also like to just share that the new Domestic Violence Chief in the Prosecutor's Office, Barry Don, is very enthusiastic and very eager to join us this year. And we're also being joined by retired Judge Terry Botnow on our panel as well. So thank you.
Started at 6:00, you said?
Six o'clock.
What is the running time they expect it to be?
Being realistic, we always have a goal of 90 minutes. However, being realistic, I tell our panel, two hours.
Thank you.
Two hours. And it's going to be structured similar to past years, where we'll open with some definitions of some key core concepts or terms so people understand what we're talking about. And then we're going to have our speaker, Alexis Ruhl, tell the story. And the panel will then take turns commenting on the issues which come up in her story, which also includes cyber stalking and cyber harassment and digital tracking using cell phone technology, specifically location sharing, which is a growing problem in our society, and is terrifying to see behind the scenes how easily an offender and an abuser can stalk a victim just through cell phone technology. Maybe I'm dating myself at my own age. To me, this was news. I didn't even realize until I started working on this year's symposium, the extent of this problem. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Counselor, could you tell me, what's the name of the meeting? It hasn't been given a name before.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just so I get it right.
Thank you. It's the Sixth Annual Domestic Violence Awareness Symposium.
Thank you.
And it is also, just so you're aware, has spurred other symposia around Bergen County, including ones we've also held at Ramaco College Violence Prevention, where we've also focused on raising awareness of sexual assault at Ramaco College with a similar team and coalition. And we've also held similar symposia at Bergen New Bridge Medical Center, focusing on the trauma components of being a victim of domestic violence and the overwhelming difficulty that victims and survivors have, especially when they have young children, especially when they're in a marital or close relationship with the abuser. While they have young children, the difficulty in getting out of these relationships is overwhelming and can a lot of times be paralyzing. So I thank everybody for their support. And last year, as I mentioned, last year's symposium, it was an honor and privilege that the New Jersey Supreme Court did officially recognize this program, which was very humble. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any correspondence?
Well, we did receive, I think we sent it out. There was a letter from the auditors, Peter, David, and Peter. And the auditors, they begin by saying, "We'd like to meet and discuss this with you. It's totally up to you if you want to have an early meeting with them or if you want to wait to have the audit review meeting when they're done." But he's laying out, he meaning Gary Bensy, who I've worked with many districts, he's kind of laying out, you know, this is everything we're doing. There are some changes. Gatsby changes every year anyway. There's always a change with Gatsby. So, you know, he's just letting the board know, "But out of courtesy, if you'd like to meet, come in and explain it." You know, if that's not what your interest is and you want to wait and then have the real numbers to talk to, then you would wait. As you know, you have a meeting at the end where they present the audit to the board.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Agenda items for discussion. Review of tentative agenda for the regular meeting to be held on September 18th. Any questions regarding review of board action? Any questions regarding review of educational programs and curriculum? Any questions regarding review of personnel recommendations? Tony?
P. 24, 25, 240 of sixth period assignment. We know what content they need.
That is for French. And so the high school teacher is going to go down to the middle school and give some extra time there to expand the French program because of interest. In sixth grade and seventh grade, it's more exploratory language, uh, role language. And then eighth grade, they declare. And so based on that number, we need more personnel.
Thank you.
Joe?
P. 24, 25, 46 as well as 56, which I assume are related. My question is on 46, the shadowing for two days. Is that something that we typically done in the past? Is that something new? And it looks like that person is going to be filling a role, so maybe Mr. Glosso, if you could just speak to that?
All right, so yes, this person will be shadowing for two days. It is a transition, so that teacher's going out on leave for, let's say, three months, three and a half months. And the man who's taking over for her, it just gives them a chance to talk about transition, what is grading policy, how do you start the class, what are your anticipatory sets, how do you close the class, parent communication, if the newsletters are not, content, curriculum, where do you need me to get to? Introduce to people, so you're just not starting day one. We have the luxury, if you're a teacher hired, let's say in June of last year or July, you have the luxury of new teacher orientation for three days to get acclimated to the building and the people, and then also convocation and then professional development the day after that before the students come in. This is pretty much, the year has commenced. We are on a roll. We are rolling full swing and this gives the chance for that person to transition, you know, more efficiently. Has it been practice? It's a good practice, so I did question it when it was asked of me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Any questions for review of finance and facilities? Any questions for review of athletics and co-curriculum?
Just want to thank the volunteer.
Yeah. Any questions regarding review of policy? Any old business? Any new business? Okay. Open to the public. I seek a motion to that one. Mail for Board of Education by law 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be voted in for three minutes. Any second, Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone from the panel? Please state your name and town.
Lynn L. Page to Milford. Just a question in general. It's nice to see that the attachments that are on the agenda are now links that you can go to, but you have to request access. And sometimes when you request access, you're not given access. So I'm just wondering, like, it's a great thing, but is there a way to just have the link live so that you can just click on it and get to whatever it is?
Yes, yes.
Are all of those things accessible to the public?
Well, that's what I have to find out. When is accessible to, you know, I'm hoping none of them were a state link, so I want to double check that, to be honest with you. But yes, it's just a click of everyone can view link or not.
Yeah, because these things, they used to actually be printed out, you know, the agenda was this big, because they would be printed out and attached to the agenda. But now it's nice to see that there's a link here, but just want to be able to get onto the link.
Do you have the links? Are you probably have them circled?
We can look into it. Yeah, you can get it.
We thought we could stuff it to the board. So I don't know if that's available to the public.
But why would there be a link if it's not? It's always been a link to the board. Not a live link like this, though.
For us, it hasn't.
Oh, but now it's for the public. So I think that just, you just have to look into that and see which documents should actually be accessible to the public.
Okay. Thanks. Any other question? All right, I seek a motion to close to the public. Nicole, seconded by Cheryl. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Board member requests for additional information? Okay. I seek a motion to go into, I seek a motion to adjourn. Nicole, seconded by Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we'll see everyone tomorrow. Thank you.